I'd like to call to order the City Planning Commission meeting of April 3, 2019. Don Brown, would you like to lead us in the pledge, please?
Dan, we're heart and feet after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Here.
Commissioner Tally, absent. Commissioner Wu, absent. Chair Pro-Tam Blackwell, absent. Vice Chair Rulon.
Here.
Chair Crandall.
Here. Thank you. The next item is special orders of business, and our city planner Gabriel Perez has a announcement to make or present someone to us here.
Yes. Thank you, Chair, and members of the planning commission. Tonight, we have our building official, Jack Holden, who's here to introduce himself. He's been on the job maybe, what, three months now? But if you can say a few words, Jack?
My pleasure to be here and meet all of you. I've been here since December, just right after Gabriel started. I came lastly from Dana Point, but I've been doing this for just about 31 years now and getting close to retirement.
You just got you. You can't leave.
I'll be here for a while. I'm going to institute new building codes starting January 1, so we have to do all our amendments for the next 2019 California building codes will be adopted from those January 1 of 2020. So I left some of my cards up there. Feel free to contact me, email, of course, is always best. If you have any questions, my office is diametrically opposed to Gabriel's around the office.
Know exactly where you sit. Just down from Cecilia, about 10 or 15 feet.
Yeah, very close to her office. So looking forward to working with Gabe, and if you have any questions, feel free to contact me.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, now that you're here, you've got to stay a while.
I'll be happy to. Very nice community. I look forward to working here.
Well, not far.
It is nice.
Do you have... We have been taking a lot of heat for how long the process takes and backlog and stuff like that. Have you seen anything? Are you instituting some stuff from the building side of the house so you can make things more efficient over there?
Well, the one process we have, the DMT process, very efficient. We're looking forward to using Blue Beam, which is electronic plan review, to coordinate that a little bit better with the OC fire. If we use Blue Beam, it's all electronic. You can access those plans from anywhere. Anybody can access those plans. So we'll be using that as a reviewing tool. Hopefully, that'll expedite some of those processes.
Okay. Thank you. Well, thank you very much, and look forward to working with you.
Sorry to come late.
Okay, the next order is the minutes, and since we do not have a quorum to... for any of the minutes to be approved, we will have to move those to the next meeting. Oral and written communications. Members of the audience may address the planning commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and city of residence, and make your presentation. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak on something other than is on the agenda tonight? Seeing none, the next item is the consent calendar, and we have nothing there, so we can open the public hearings. We have one item this evening. 1351 Caie Avanzado, conditional use permit 1901-5, amended site plan permit 1901-7, major architectural permit 1901-8. Goddard School, Jonathan Lightfoot will be presenting for the city.
Good evening, commissioners and Chair Crandall. We'll be looking at the Goddard School in Talega this evening. It's a bit interesting to say evening when we saw some daylight out. I think this is my first presentation this year during daylight. What we're looking at is a proposed project for a new daycare that is in the Talega Business Park area. The proposed daycare would be on the first floor of an existing building. The second floor would remain as office use. There are some other modifications to the site, generally that there would be some parking area that's converted to playground area, a relocation of a trash enclosure, and some new safety bollards and fencing. One of the other components of the use permit is the institution of a shared parking arrangement between the office and the daycare use. These are the entitlements that are required for this project. A conditional use permit covers the requirement as specified within the Talega specific plan for a daycare. A minor conditional use permit is required for shared parking there, being reviewed here concurrently under the one use permit. An amended site plan permit covers the conversion of the parking into playground space, as well as the relocation of the trash enclosure and other miscellaneous structures on the site. And finally, a minor architectural permit that reviews the design of those new accessory structures. This is a photo here of the existing site, which is on a 1.34 acre parcel. The building is just over 22,000 square feet. Each of those floors is just over 11,000 square feet. It is bounded on three sides by three right-of-ways, Avenue de Pico, Camino Salosia, and Caie Avanzado. A quick history of the site approvals. There's only one development at the site, but it did go through three rounds of site plan permit review between 2004 and 2006. The first was for a combined office and warehouse use in 2004, followed by a Talega Life Church and an associated daycare, and finally, the Talega Business Center. Each of those was approved, but only the last was constructed. Speaking to the daycare operations that are proposed, again, the daycare would operate on the first floor with office on the second floor. The proposed number of children is 168 with 20 teachers or staff members. The range of students would be in... from six months to... sorry, six weeks is what that should say. Apologies, to six years. And operating hours would be from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. There are 10 classrooms on that first floor. This image here shows the location. This is an excerpt from our GIS that shows the different layers. So the green is open space. The light purple is that business park within the Talega specific plan. Across the street are some residential medium zoned residences. As far as the location goes, again, there was a previous approval by the planning commission for a daycare at this location. It was not constructed, but it was reviewed. This location is near residential and job center locations. It has easy access from Avenue de Pico. And in regards to noise buffers, the proposed playgrounds are surrounded by three right-of-ways, as shown in the building just left of the site at 1341, does have no windows that face the location of the proposed playground equipment. The residences are about 275 feet across the right-of-way there at Pico. For the shared parking, there was a parking study provided by Kim Lee Horn that reviewed some similar uses, one of which was another daycare that's in the Talega Business Park, which is the San Clemente Monastery School. There's a shared entry into a parking lot that is also used by office buildings. That location is at 1141 Puerto del Sol, and the staff report included information and data that was gathered from that location. Counts were also provided from a nearby Goddard School in Carlsbad. The difference between peak demand times for those different uses was exhibited in Table 3 of that parking study, which ultimately showed that there will not be a deficiency of parking at the site. The site is also proposing designated drop-off parking, so as you enter directly in front of the business, there are, I believe, eight stalls that are... have signage as well as green curbing that will designate that those are drop-off stalls for the children. In regards to design, the Talega specific plan allows stylistic flexibility, so we're not looking at Spanish colonial revival architecture in this instance. There are similar structures in the business park, again, at that San Clemente Monastery School. There are play structures that are generally primary colors. There's fencing that's picketed in black metal. In this case, the play structures are proposed to use earth tones, again, with picketed fencing, and a trash enclosure that also uses earth tones to blend with the building style that exists currently. There is a condition that staff has included, Condition 4.15, to replace a guardrail at the rear with bollards just to maintain more consistency with the site design. This diagram here shows basic site plan and some security. So it's a little bit small, but I'm going to grab the mouse and indicate a couple of items here. So this light tan arrow here is bollards that are located at the front of the school. The Goddard policy for bollards is that they should be spaced 48 inches apart, and I believe applicant can speak more to this, but that is in response to some past security concerns other locations have had in the past. To the left of the site is a fence enclosing the walkway that would be where children can exit classrooms on that side, would not regularly be used, but more to... just as an extra precautionary measure that if students do get out of those classrooms, that they're not directly into a parking lot area. I've noted here in the red and the left that this is the new location of the trash enclosure. The trash enclosure was formerly in this location where the playgrounds are proposed to be. The primary playgrounds are here. There is one location at the front. That's a tot lot, so this is for the youngest of the children. There's a small tree play structure that's there, but otherwise, it's not a full playground like the others are. Right here in the front of the building with the arrow that's a yellowish-green color, if I can get my mouse to indicate, is the loading zone that would be designated as temporary parking only for parents to park, walk their children in. Once the parents walk in through these front doors, there is a biometric scanner, so they would be using their hands to gain access to the school area. So the second-floor office employees don't have direct access to the first floor. It would only be parents that are registered and have their handprint to access this area. They do have to drop their children off directly with the classroom. This office here, just off the side of that lobby, does have a glass base, which is where the director would be sitting, so they'll have access, visible access, to that lobby space. And in certain circumstances, if there's a guardian that's coming to pick up, there would be a password system used with the director to allow them access. As for the offices on the second floor, they're currently vacant, so there's not current tenants right there. So once they are tenanted, they would be coming through the same front entry, but directly forward into the elevator and stairwell up to the second floor. So there's not, again, anyone from those office spaces that would be accessing the classroom spaces in any way. At the rear, there is an exit stairwell, and as that exits out to the parking lot, to the right is a locked gate. So again, the play structures are enclosed by gates that are locked from the outside. They do have the panic hardware to release from the inside, but from the outside, they are locked. So in summary, the location of the daycare staff feels is appropriate, given that any potential noise impacts are mitigated by the location of the roadways and the adjacent building not having windows directly towards those play areas. The parking study demonstrates sufficient parking. Playground would be adequately buffered from businesses and residences, and the design of the accessory structures would blend with the buildings of the business park. As such, staff does recommend that the planning commission determine the project to be categorically exempt from CEQA per Class 15301 and 15311, and adopt Resolution PC 19-009, approving these entitlements for the Goddard School. Staff, of course, is available for questions, and we do have representatives from the applicant team here as well.
Very good. Any questions?
Yes, so...
Mr. Kaczynski.
Thank you. So Jonathan, I called and I asked some questions of you to do some research. I was wondering if you had that ready for us?
I do, yes. So I did put some additional information at the end of the presentation, so I'm going to flip through to that. There was a question regarding the staff-to-student ratio. So this is pulled from online ratios for daycare centers in the state of California. So the information that is here is what would be used essentially for applicants to come to a total number of what we would need to have for parking. So what was given is 168 students to 20 staff members. There are... here you can see different ratios that apply, so I'm going to move to a next slide that gives a quick breakdown based off of the occupancy that's shown on... this was Sheet 8 2.1 in the plans. And so, within the parentheses, just a quick... something I put together this afternoon to show a representative of what could be done, and I'm going to defer any more specific questions to the applicants on how they came to this specific 168 number. But this is a breakdown of, for instance, in 0 to 18 months, the occupancy shown for the two rooms there totals to 32. And with going back before, where we have the 4 to 1 ratio, if you apply that 4 to 1 ratio of six staff and 24 children, you stay within that occupancy limit, 30 persons, and that's the breakdown there of how many children to staff in that location. The ratio is different, of course, coming back as they get older. 3 to 5, you have a 12 to 1 ratio. So the total parking that I came to just with this sample scenario was 43. That is below what the 168 number was, but the 43 is also below the number that was given within the staff report of the total parking that is the demand for the space. And this slide here just shows real quick. I put in the blue larger numbers for the occupancy numbers for each of those rooms. The younger children are on the bottom side. As you enter the building, that would be the right side, and then the left side is the older children. And this is something we can get into separately if we need to. So I'll leave that as my response for now, and if there are additional questions, I'd be happy to answer or potentially bring the applicant in to fill in.
No, you bring me in. I'm done.
Okay. Okay. I have the same question. Is there any tool we have in the resolution for if they change their business plan and change the classes around? My reason I'm concerned about, I think right now they're going to have plenty of parking, but when a tenant comes in upstairs and may want additional parking, we've got to know how to balance the two and hold them to their business plan and the number of stalls that they will need for that.
Sure.
So is there something in there, or do we have a procedure to do that?
So one of the options that we can do, and I have not included this currently, is a condition of approval tying it to a specific number of students and teachers. The parking study, as that was done, it presumes... let me flip through real quick to... this is a table from the parking study, presumes full occupancy of the office space. So if the office is just being occupied, that would not trigger any alteration to the lower floor. If there was some use that was proposed that was more intense than the office space, then that's something that would be an amendment to this shared parking study, and they would have to return for review of that. Typically, shared parking is a minor review, and so that would be something that could potentially go to zoning administrator if there was an amendment in the future regarding that.
Okay. Mr. Rulon?
Yeah, for the bollards, I couldn't find it, but I did see... I just saw an example, sample picture of potential bollards, but they look pretty utilitarian to me. Not sure if they quite go to the aesthetic of what's there. Are there other samples or ideas of what the bollards are going to be ultimately look like?
It is a pretty... as is shown currently, it's a pretty standard concrete bollard. We do have color options, so the applicant did provide me a sample sheet of what those colors could be, and they are flexible on that. My indication to them was that we would prefer the coloring to be something that matches either the standard siding color or trim of what the existing building is. Certainly, we could change that to have additional color. As of now, though, the design of the bollard is just a standard concrete.
Those standard cylindrical...
Correct.
Okay.
Could I add something?
Yeah.
I am Andrew Hinman. I'm representing the applicants, Vicrom, Floyd Potty, and Anuna Laurie. I want to thank the board, and I want to especially thank Jonathan regarding your comment about how long things take. We've been through this process pretty quickly through the cooperation of your city staff. Regarding the bollards...
Want to come to the mic?
The bollards are a traffic-rated bollard. I mean, they've been tested to meet... there's a new ASTM standard for low-impact car protection, and that's a new standard from 2016. So there's only two companies I know that make them, so they don't have an option in terms of style. So that's... the bollards we chose are actually tested to meet a 5,500-pound car at 10 miles an hour.
So these bollards are the state requirement for daycare centers? Is that what it is?
It's a requirement of the franchise company.
Of the franchise, okay.
Yeah.
And these are the only styles you can get at this time to get that standard of safety, is that what is it?
Yeah, there's several hundred... probably 120 colors, so we can stick with the earth tone, but they don't make it in a decorative style or anything like that at this point.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Commissioner Kaczynski, your lights on.
Oh, sorry.
I actually... I did have... sorry, I did have a couple of questions really about the conditions of approval. They might be legal lease stuff, so Mal, this might be something for you. In Condition 715, we explicitly state that the drop-off and pickup is going to be in accordance with Goddard's established policies. Since this is going to run with the land, is it a good idea to indicate that they are following Goddard's policies? Or what if this is another daycare that goes in there, or Goddard goes out of business, or it's another business entirely? Is that an issue?
Yes, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. This could result in... these policies can change on a whim, right? We don't have any control over those policies. So even if it stayed in Goddard's hands, those policies could be eliminated, and therefore, there really are no policies to govern the pickup and drop-offs. If the commission wanted to ensure that we had absolute control of this, we'd want to spell out exactly what those policies are in this condition or in subconditions.
And would this also tie us in if there was... if they left the Goddard franchise, or there was a new owner to the daycare center that didn't use Goddard's? Would this require them then to use Goddard's?
They were technically... yeah, exactly.
Okay. So just from a legal point of view, does it make sense to play with this a little bit?
The most conservative approach would be to understand what those policies are and to spell them out in the condition, and not reference Goddard's policies, but actually reference the exact policy for pickup and drop-off.
Okay. Thank you. And let's see. The other question was 716. We talk about special events outside of normal business hours. We specify at the end of that, occasional special activities. Ancillary to the school childcare center, such as back-to-school nights and parent nights, are permitted. That, again, seemed a little bit vague to me, like, you know, what is an ancillary activity versus something that they're going to need a permit for? Do we have... is that clear in our code somewhere, or do we need to spell that out a little more clear?
I'm not sure about your code, but the way that this sentence is written, the examples that are given would limit the kind of activities that are allowed, because the second clause in there lays out such as back-to-school nights, parent nights, and so that's going to be the general category of activities that are permitted, so I'm comfortable with that language.
All right. So those two things, and anything else that needs a special permit, so... okay. Let's see. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay. I see no more lights on. Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Again, just... we would like to thank... the applicants are very happy to be, you know, starting their business in San Clemente. Everyone with the city staff has been excellent to work with, and, you know, we're here to answer any questions. Jonathan did an excellent job of understanding our application and explaining the use. So if there's any other questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
We have one question.
Yeah, maybe possibly not. Are the bollards called out in this drawing stuff that you prepared that might be generic enough that we could use by just the Goddard standards? Did you pull out the... did you quote in the fine notes of the... any of the drawings anywhere?
There are details for the bollards.
So many inches, so many high...
There's a detail in the detail sheets that show they're 48 inches edge to edge, and that's based on the ASTM standard for car protection. So... and that's, you know, to make sure that they'll stop cars from any angles.
And the new ASTM standard is what?
It's FM 3016.
Dated, like, 2016?
That was from 2016, correct.
Maybe some wording like that would help out the bollard situation, get away from...
Yeah, you know, I previously worked for Goddard, and unfortunately, over a course of about seven or eight years, about there were 10 instances of cars driving into the buildings. So they, you know, really looked at car protection, and as they delved into it, you found that most bollards are not tested and may not actually stop a car. They may actually bend over and launch a car. So people use landscape boulders. They could be more dangerous. So they did a lot of research to find out what is an actual measured means of car protection, and, you know, they found the new ASTM standard and found a company that actually has done the testing for it.
Maybe we could enter just language in there per ASTM that I dated bollards will comply, and that would be generic enough is what I'm pulling on here for the good point you brought up, Jim.
Okay. We'll work that out during discussion. Okay. Thank you. Hold on. Okay, I see no more lights. So we'll close the presentation portion, open for public comment. Do we have any cards for public? So no one wishes to speak, so we'll open it up for discussion. Who would like to start?
I'll start.
Commissioner Brown?
Yeah, very good briefing and way to put it together, Jonathan. I went to the Goddard site. There are 160-some sites and seven in California and 30 states, and very extensive in requirements for ingress, egress, and safety, and just learned something more on how they even specify the bollards. I didn't quite see that. So there are... you go to their website, there's got to be some reason in 20 years they can go to 160 franchises, and they've done that through a very, very, very detailed process. I know you're involved with education yourself. So I felt this is a very well put-together briefing and should make it all work, and so I'm going to be supportive of it. so I'm going to be supportive of it as presented.
Okay. Very good. I have a question for Mal. The bollards are not required by code or the building department, I don't believe. This is a request by the applicant, and if we're in our decision saying, yes, those bollards are the ones we want to use, are we accepting some kind of liability for those being the right bollards?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I would assume that the building department would have reviewed the bollards and accepted the kind of bollards that are being placed here. If they haven't, there are immunities that are granted to cities pursuant to the government code, and I would imagine that those immunities would potentially cover us here. At the same time, the applicant is required to defend and indemnify the city for any liability that arises from the applications, so we're probably covered here.
Well, I was more addressing the fact if we were to take the specs that the franchise uses and say, we don't want to reference theirs, but we'll put in their specifications in our document, or would we be better off just being very generic, saying, we approve the bollards if they are substantial enough to protect the occupants?
Yeah, I think your safest route is to be more general, more vague, and allow them to work with the building official to place the correct bollards.
I would think that's probably the best way to word it. Okay. Commissioner Rulon?
Yeah, I think this is a great line juice for this area. A lot of people need this kind of thing, and this is, I think, one of the biggest, probably the biggest daycare center that it'll have in that area, so I think that's really good. As I'm, as I've been, after, we talked about 7.15, I'm a little more comfortable with it. It's, if a different business comes in, the CUP will lapse anyway. This gives us not a means, we don't really want to enforce it, but it gives us a way to make sure things are running smoothly, and if they don't follow it, we can pull the permit, so I'm actually good with that. I wish the bollards were a little more aesthetic, but the fact that they're there to protect children is really the, you know, the critical thing, so if staff is in a position to make sure that they, that it's at least painted in, you know, those earth tones and try to subdue it a little bit, then, you know, for this particular use, it seems to be, you know, the safety is really the primary thing. So, so I'm in, I can make all the findings, and I'm in favor of it.
Commissioner Kozinski?
I also think this is a good use for that land. I did have a question to Jonathan about how the certificate of occupancy is going to be drafted, seeing as how the number of staff is really related to the age of the infants in a specific classroom.
This is probably a question that I would defer to Gabriel, if he has better information than me, as far as the certificate of occupancy, it's something issued by the building official. My assumption is that those are generally based off of the use, so I don't know how detailed they would get in breaking down the base. I don't know if Gabriel can contribute any additional information.
I'm not sure either, but the building, for the building official to issue a certificate of occupancy, you know, planning would be doing an inspection, it would be based on the conditions of approval in this report. So in terms of occupancy for the building and for the use, that would be the building official, and I'm not sure.
Jack left too early.
I wish we could have asked him earlier.
So right now, it says 160-some-odd children?
Excuse me?
Is that correct, for its use? It's 168 children, but it doesn't break it down by age group? Should that be something that we include in the conditions of approval?
That kind of pertains to the same thing we were talking about on parking, that if they were all infants, there's obviously going to be a bigger demand on parking, so it probably does need to be something that is addressed in the, that, one, the fire marshal's going to have an occupancy, the building department's going to have exiting occupancy, and that will limit the size of the building, but that doesn't relate to parking whatsoever.
Right.
So there probably needs to be either on the plans when it's issued and break out probably by room, I would suspect they'll say, this is the infant's room, it can hold 23 kids, that means there's going to be one for four, so you're going to have, you know, five or six instructors.
Sure. A couple of quick things. One, I do believe Andy may have some experience with just a variety of certificates of occupancy, so I may, if you don't mind, allow him to come up and address that one question. If we do want to do a condition of approval, we certainly could. I did throw in just a quick potential, and this could obviously be expanded, but something along these lines, that there are so many employees, and the second line there, students could certainly be broken up into age demographics should we need. Alternatively, we could use, must be substantially in conformance with Sheet A 2.1 that's in front of you, that's a part of the application, that does already show occupant loads for each of those classrooms based off of ages. So we already do have an information, information based off of the general breakdown of what those age groups are, and if there is a significant, if there's a proposal to modify that, for instance, where they want to have an emphasis on a toddler group and expand that portion of the school, that could be something that goes through our amendment process where, because of this, because toddlers require more teachers, a higher teacher to student ratio, so that would impact the parking, and so a modification in their business plan at that point would be something that goes through the amendment process. But we could make that explicit through a condition.
Okay.
Andy, would you like to address the?
The sheet that was shown, the sheet that was shown earlier was the occupant load calculation based on the building code. The occupant load for this building is 205. The, this is the occupant load based on the building code, that's for exiting requirements, and your certificate of occupancy will say 205. They can only operate based on the ratios. Every classroom on the lower side is for 12 children, every classroom on the top, except for the middle one, is for 24. The state will come in and grant a license based on the square footage requirements. This is, this is a model that Goddard's done in California a number of times, in actually all seven schools, and they will get licensed for 168 children. There's really not much of a chance that they would get a license for more than that. So I think it would be reasonable as a condition to say that they will operate at the occupancy as determined by the state.
Well, in fact, they'll get a license for the preschoolers, that's one license.
Right.
And then they'll have to apply a second license for infants.
Correct.
So that's what, and infants require the four-to-one ratio, which is, would require more teachers if it's expanded, right?
Yes. There, I mean, we could, a condition saying that we're not going to, you know, the infants are going to take more space, so if we actually added infants, we would go down in occupancy because of the cribs. So if you look at the size of the infant room, it's 600 square feet for 12 occupants, where the rest are 420 square feet for 12, and that's because of the space for the cribs. So if you actually added infants, our occupancy would go down for the school.
Right, but the use for parking will go up.
I don't see it that way, but, you know, we're not planning to make the change, so we're happy to have a condition that says if we're going to change from what we get licensed for the state, we're perfectly happy to do that. I mean, the infants, the number of children doesn't change the number of parents that are dropping their kids off, so if we don't change the number of occupants, it's not going to change the parking. But we're happy to put that condition because, you know, we're sure of that, so.
Okay. Don't see any other lights on. Then let me ask Jonathan, do you feel that we could do this with a directive to you when you're figuring out the final documents and all, and do it outside the conditions of approval, or do you think it needs to be in the condition of approval, locking in the occupancy?
So my, the plans that are in front of you that were distributed to you are the plans that will be stamped, and that does include that sheet that lists occupants. So I would be comfortable that that covers the limitation on the breakdown of the classrooms based off of the age groups as they are now. I would defer to Mal if he thinks that there's any value in the additional security of another, of a condition.
There's always more security in a condition. There's no question there.
I was just worried that we wouldn't be able to really get the verbiage correct this evening. I mean, it could get pretty complicated trying to, unless we say, just lock it in at what's on that page.
That's going to be your easiest approach. If the commission wants to lock in occupancy, your easiest approach is just to lock it in based on the application, trying to play with occupancy when it, when it comes to infants and toddlers, and you can enjoy that, I'm not going to engage. That's going to be difficult.
Very good. That's kind of what I was looking for. Very good. I will say, it was good report. I can make the findings for each of the approvals and the sequel finding, so I think it's a good project. I will throw out a note that as far as bollards go, there are tons of different bollards available. There are cast ones that slide over the poles even to make them more decorative, so you're not limited to just a painted steel pole, concrete in it, but that's what the operator So I think color is important, and I think, you know, if we can go a color that isn't all red or whatever, and if it has to have some red on it by their operating standards, maybe we can go a color and just stripe a band around the top, something like that, that would satisfy me, and I think that can be worked out with staff. So I am in favor. Anybody have any additional comments or a motion?
Do we have some verbiage for Condition 718, that class loading will be as per the application submitted or something like that? Is that what you were thinking? Something generic that Mal will engage in?
Yeah, we talked also about the drop-off procedure, and that's part of a business I guess we could state that it will be in conformance with the business plan as of this date, so if it changes in the future, they have to come and tell the city what changed.
So student load will be as the business plan as presented on this date?
Would that be appropriate? So if it changes or anything, we have?
Sure, that's appropriate. It does seem, upon reading 715 closer, that the main intent here is to require that parents and guardians park and walk their children into the building.
Yeah, they have to go in and identify themselves.
I think that's what they're really getting at here, and so the way this is written, yes, it does reference the Goddard policies and regulations, but what they're really getting at, I think, is the park and drop-off. So I think you could even take out the reference to Goddard regulations, as long as the language in there about parking and walking in is there.
Maybe we should just scratch the reference to Goddard and leave it at?
As long as that's the intent, but I think that's the intent of this condition.
Yeah, the way the procedure reads, they have to go in and have a handprint type or a special ID to go through the door, in their, in their, the way their security plan lays out.
Yeah. They actually have to sign their child in and out, so they have to walk them in.
I think what they're going to find, experience I've had with, when we tried to get parking lot management with the boys and girls, we put the signs out there, but until you get, until you get the whole student population and parents in flow, you have to have a parking lot manager out there during the high-peak times to get the cars appropriately moving in and out, on-site staff out in the lot. That's what we had to do initially when we put time-limited parking signs out in the parking lot to get things flowing. That's, that's a daily thing. They're going to find out the smooth way or the hard way, one way or the other, so.
Commissioner Perez, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
Yes, there are some conditions of approval that require the applicant to be consistent with the plans and the information provided in the staff report, so if they were to be able to amend, if they wanted to amend that, they would have to come back to the planning commission and amend their CUP. And I could show you what those conditions are. 1.3. And maybe see another one? I guess that would be it, right? That would be it? Consistency.
To be a substantial performance?
At their discretion. What was the operational decision? So do we, on 715, should we do a child drop-off and pickup shall occur in accordance with state regulations which require parents and guardians to park and walk their children into the building? Just taking out the reference to Goddard?
You know, I, at first I was thinking that, and I'd be okay with it, but it's, I think the reason for us to have it in there is not so that we can enforce Goddard's policies, but if the applicant isn't following the policies that they're telling us that they want to follow and are going to be for child safety, that allows us to relook at the permit. So I could live with it either way, but I kind of think if it's in there, it gives, it gives the city one more leverage in terms of parking and other things to say, hey, you aren't living up to these, to these standards.
Okay. Believe it as is. I'm fine either way. Okay. Do we have a?
Let me find a resolution here.
Motion is right here.
Here we are.
Okay.
I, oh, you're going to do it?
Yeah, I was.
Sure, go ahead.
I don't care. I propose that the planning commission approve Resolution Number PC 19-009, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of San Clemente, California. Approving conditional use permit 19-015, amended site out plan permit 05-147, plans 19-017, and minor architectural permit 19-018 for Goddard School to establish a new childcare with shared parking at 1351 Cali-Avenza Auto.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Brown, second by Rulon, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 4-0. Congratulations and?
Thank you so much.
Good luck. Always glad to welcome a new business to the city. That takes care of the public hearings. Next item is new business, which we have none. Old business, we have none, so there's reports of commissioners and staff. Anyone have an item? Commissioner Rulon?
I have an item. I know our next, I just got the message that our DRSC meeting next week is going to be canceled. The one after that, on the 24th of April, I just found out I'm going to be out of town on business, so I will be missing that DRSC, so our, you know, our stand-ins will, one of our stand-ins will need to cancel.
Which date is that?
Pardon me?
Which DRSC?
That's the 24th, April 24th. So three weeks from today.
Finally, one of the first two have been canceled in my watch.
Is that the only item?
I have something to add.
I have to?
Commissioner?
I'm scheduled for a knee replacement surgery on the 1st of May, so that's going to have to affect.
Absolutely. We will certainly work around it.
Yeah, certain scheduling issues. I'm going to be out for quite a while until I get kind of hobbled in here with a walker or something like that.
Okay.
Bring the van and throw me in the back of the stretcher. Probably a good idea.
Okay. So do we have a motion for adjournment?
Well, I just have one item, Chairman. On 11E, we're, I'm sorry, 11D, there proposed cancellation of the study session and planning commission meeting for May 22nd, and I know Chairman had discussed with me, talking with the planning commission about maybe proposing an alternative date if possible. We would have to see if the council chamber is available another date, but if there's a desire to still have that meeting, we'd have to, staff would have to find when.
May, what date, what's the date?
May 22nd. The reason why May 22nd, we couldn't have the meeting here, the city council's going to have a budget meeting that day, so they're requesting the planning commission to either counsel the meeting or, you know, find an alternative.
So I indicated that I was open to moving our meeting to a Thursday then, just so applicants aren't having to wait two additional weeks to get their projects heard, and if people would be available, great, if not, that is what it is.
I don't know after my surgery, after three weeks, whether I can. I don't know after my surgery, after three weeks, whether I can holler in here or not.
But if we can get a quorum on that day, that would be wonderful to service our applicants.
This is May, May what, 20...
May 22nd is the regular planning commission.
You've already got it listed in here as canceled.
But it's, it would be up to the planning commission to decide.
We don't even have a protected business that right now, you don't forecast.
Not at this time.
I need to check my calendar, but the 23rd is probably okay, I think, you know, as long as we're reminded to, remind everybody to check their calendars, and next time we can make a firm decision.
We need a drop-dead date to be able to schedule that and get it noticed and whatnot.
I think, I'm wondering if we can do that.
Because it'd be good, we want to get the rest of the commissioners' input also on that.
Yeah, I think we might be able to do that for our next planning commission meeting then.
Okay, great.
We might want to send an email reminder to people so they check their calendars before they come in.
I'll send it to the group, and we still have to figure out if this room is available that week on other dates.
Very good. Okay.
How are things holding for the 17th? Everything locked in for the, there's two tentatives, which is the traffic people.
Yeah, and then April 17th is the Colombiana expansion, so they're proposing expansion, so that's...
Years in waiting.
One planning item.
A long time coming.
Yes. Just one other item, so is that good enough direction that, you know, we'll look to see if this room's available and check with all the planning commissioners? Okay. One other item, just want to remind everyone to submit their Form 700s if you haven't done so, so city clerk's office told me to remind everybody. And then last, just yesterday at the city council meeting, the shortlist project is technically approved because city council approved the minutes. They were continued from their last meeting because there were some, they wanted staff to provide information on how the project would provide for public safety costs, like their share of public safety costs. So, we have a general plan policy about infill development, paying its fair share of costs related to public safety. We did make that finding in the resolution, but there was a project approved in 2016, Rise Paradise Assisted Living Facility.
We were here for that.
That had a special condition regarding the operators not making emergency calls for non-emergency reasons such as back-to-bed and back-to-feet issues. So, when we presented the conditions of approval and how we felt that it actually covered the item, the applicant also provided a letter understanding that they wouldn't call emergency services for non-emergency reasons.
It was pulled by Councilmember Hamm and the fire authority, concerned about ambulance costs.
Well, this is an active senior one where they are not providing any...
Correct.
...healthcare, so it's going to be what it's going to be.
It's a different project, yes.
Well, there were some other issues there, because it was door open, then the former, she used to work for the city, came and made a pitch for affordable senior housing, should 30 or 40 units in there, she'd written a letter to the Lincoln Commission, so they came down and made a pitch last night because of the, the door was open to change the project down at 11th hour and 59 minutes and redesignate so much for affordable housing. I came and talked in behalf of the applicant, had been on the radar for a long time, a little late for that type of maneuver.
Very good.
I haven't seen her mom what her name is.
Okay, do we have a motion? Mr. Ruland, do we, do we want to talk about the July 3rd meeting?
The what?
July 3rd?
That's right.
Oh, I thought that's already been...
Cancelled?
Oh, it's already been canceled?
Yeah. It hasn't been, it'd be up to the planning commission, because we thought maybe there might be plans by the planning commission before July 4th, so that's presented to the planning commission for consideration.
Let's do it when everybody's here.
All right, that's fine.
Okay.
If that's the case, then I will move that we adjourn to the next adjourned regular meeting of the planning commission to be held on April 17, 2019 at 6:00 PM. Council chambers located 100 Avenue to Procedio, San Clemente, California, is the regular meeting of the study session has been canceled due to lack of business.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Ruland, second by Kozinski, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes 4-0.
I know the city council's always canceled their meeting on the July 2nd.